All right, I call the meeting to order please. Okay, everybody can stand for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our heart.
All right, as Dina is out in training tonight, I will ask our Deputy Clerk Julie Stroud, Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, we do.
All right, excellent. We don't have a public hearing tonight, so we will move on to a review and approval of our minutes from January 6th.
Under the new business from last meeting, I don't know if it's relevant or not, but I thought that I was post one, not post four. If it means, then it matters.
Brad, um, do you know how we're gonna find that out? Will we have to go to Jane and ask her?
Some new business.
Where we swore you in.
All right, I thought I was post one, not four. That's like Tom, you are three, aren't you?
I'm three, yeah.
Yeah.
I just have to go back and check and see if maybe, um, you were up for election, though, so I do know that. So it was whatever Jane gave us, that we did, but I'll go back, I don't, this may be just a...
You know, I almost have a feeling that it's post one and three an odd number of years, and two and four an even number. That almost rings a bell.
But all the elections are in odd number of years.
Okay, so never mind, that doesn't work.
Oh, the post, you're talking about.
Or posts.
I got you.
Okay, okay, okay. Hmm, all right.
I got you, one and three and two and four. But I'll, I'll just check on that and see, because it was, whatever Jane, whatever I guess Dina did was copied off the certification that Jane sent her, and if there was a typo, we can get that correct.
Other than that, everything looks good. I think we move forward as, as is, without exception.
Okay, so can I get a motion on the floor to accept the minutes provided we, we make sure that the post assignments are correct and have those corrected?
I'll make that motion.
First.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second, all in favor. Unanimous, thank y'all. All right, um, under new business, uh, we have the 12 parks development that will be going in along Macintosh Trail, pretty much from Highway 54 all the way down to Reese Road. We discovered maybe three months ago that out of all the lots in town, or in their development, there are 11 of them in town, in the town limits of Sharpsburg. Um, and then the question came up, who does the permitting, who does the inspection, who does all the administrative work that goes into, um, signing off on a new development? And with having fairly limited staff and a lot of the prep work already being done, we had discussions with Cowee County Water and Sewer, the county, the developer, and said, if we can, we can sign an intergovernmental agreement to have the county and Water and Sewer Authority do the inspection and whatnot on those 11 lots in town, the town will not have to take on that administrative burden, because as it is, the developer and the builders would have to come to us for those 11 lots, we'd have to contact Safe Bill, we would have to do all the work, whereas they're already doing that anyway for the other 124 lots. So, we pursued the IGA, worked it out with all the parties, and that is what we have in front of us today. Um, Brad, am I missing anything there?
No, with subsequent, assuming that the IGA is approved, there will be the filing of an application to rezone the lots, to what would be the town's PCD, zoning classifications, with the same restrictions and regulations that were contained in the county's former R1B, single-family residential infield median-density zoning classification.
But those are two separate things that will come before council. Tonight, we're just talking about the IGA to allow the county and Water and Sewer Authority to provide those permitting services, that the lots will remain in the town, we will receive the property tax for those 11 lots, we simply will not have to spend the time and the money to permit the construction and inspection and other pre-purchase activities. About garbage pickup. Who, how are y'all gonna do your garbage pickup?
That'd be up to the town, if the town wants to pick those 11 houses up, they can. If not, we can tell them they have to get the pickup, like everybody else, and that's kind of customer choice in the county.
Yeah.
Doesn't make any sense to have two trucks rounding through there.
If they're gonna be in the city, we're already charging on our tax bill for the garbage pickup.
Yeah. And, and the, um, yeah, yeah, you're right, it will be. Because typically in town, the property taxes pay a majority of the, of the trash bill, of the trash pickup that we charge.
So what are you saying, well, that'll remain the same for these 11 people?
Yeah, I would say.
Yeah, we can. And really, you know, it comes down to, I guess, to what we, what we want to do, I mean, if they... I don't think that the, the contract is exclusive to waste, or GFI. Um, I guess if a resident wanted to have a different one, they could, but they're not gonna save any, any money off the property taxes. So if they wanted to do something, or if it changes later to where the county goes to a single-source pickup, it would, you know, it would fall under that, but, no, I would assume it would be up under the town's garbage service. And if you look, you can see, there's an overall map about halfway, um, and the map is oriented northward, and you can kind of see, the 11 lots are the ones down here in the bottom left-hand corner. And then the blow-up is right here. So it is literally just this curve right here, that is within the town limits. And part of the IGA also includes road maintenance. Of course, our service delivery strategy outlines that the county helps us with roads anyway, so really, it's no change, it's just that we have some specific language in here about the roads, um, that will then be carried over into the SDS. Correct, Brad?
Yes, from a practical standpoint, you know, it will be the county maintaining the entire roadway.
Has that separate agreement been committed to?
What they're doing already.
The service delivery strategy?
Number eight. We're gonna enter into a separate agreement regarding the maintenance.
Hey, br... Okay, hey Brad, under number eight, the separate agreement regarding roadway maintenance, is that our SDS? That would still be our service delivery strategy, wouldn't it? It's on page three of the IGA.
Yes, that would be part of the, whatever they're doing now under the SDS from a separate agreement on the maintenance.
So, yes, so the SDS is a separate agreement.
Now, they, they require the developer to maintain the roads for three years after plat, so once the, um, final plat's recorded and lots are subdivided, we have to provide a three-year maintenance bond to the county and maintain the roads for that amount of time, then at three years, usually about 60 days before the bond expires, they come out and do an inspection and give us a punch list of things that are repaired, before they take any responsibility of the maintenance.
So then really, our responsibility through the county would happen three years after the plat has been recorded, okay? Through the performance of the bond. And basically, we wanted to do this for a couple of different reasons. Number one, not to overwhelm, uh, the town's limited staff. Two, to provide continuity to the builders and developers and inspectors, because there's nothing worse than having more than two or three cooks in the kitchen. And then two, it's being a good neighbor, you know, we could, we could certainly make this process difficult for them, but I don't think that's in anybody's interest. So those are the reasons that, that we managed to, um, we, we came to this and wanted to bring this before council. Do y'all want to speak a little bit about 12 parks and all the things that you're doing and what you want to bring to the community?
Sure, so that's 676 lots total. This particular phase, that the 11 lots that's in your town, is, we've self-imposed, it's not the county's age-restricted ordinance, we self-imposed this phase to be age-restricted, so it's 55 and older. Price point of the homes are gonna be mid-3s to probably mid-4s in this phase. This phase will have its own amenities center that are just for that pod, those 124 lots will have a pool and a bathhouse, a cabana, there's an observation deck, and a couple of little, we call them pocket parks, within the community. So that's what's in that phase. We're gonna put sidewalks, we have to wrap the property line with sidewalks, we're putting four-foot sidewalks to that corner there that you see at the property line, which is at the end, where the town limits section is, and it'll go down North Road, and then the sidewalks will go to Reese Road eventually when the other phase is building out.
So which one of these is phase D or B or?
This is all.
Yeah, they're all backwards. We've got a big, yeah, she's got a big one there. We can spread it out. Looks better.
How many did you say?
676.
When they get in, by the time we get in design, a lot of times when they design, you'll lose a couple of lots a phase, so most likely, we'll probably end up with about 660.
What's the average lot size?
Eighty-five hundred square feet.
So you can see Macintosh and the North Row.
Is it like a quarter of an acre, half acre?
About a quarter acre.
Right here are our city limits.
But then we have 40% open space throughout the, the community, so. So we've got for this phase, this is where the amenities center goes, and this phase, we'll have to put a sidewalk all the way around everywhere there's frontage. We're doing a, it's called full-depth reclamation on Macintosh Trail, where all the asphalt's torn up and you put new asphalt on it.
Road bed and everything.
Yeah, so it go, and that'll happen as the phases develop, um, and this will be the first section of Macintosh, and then when they do the next phase, that comes off of Macintosh, they'll redo the road, so that whole Macintosh Trail will be, I would say, three, four years will be all new. There's a roundabout going in the one section where Phase Two and Three are done. The Phase One is plat, there's 99 lots in there, they've got about 12 houses under construction now. They're getting ready to start a phase that comes off of 54, will start before summer, and there's 129 lots there. This 124-lot development will be phased, they'll do 75, and then 49, but that work should start, uh, by the first of April. So the, there's a master amenity up by the lake that'll have tennis courts, pickleball courts, a very large pool, and a large clubhouse, so the residents in that Phase D, that your lots are in, are able to use just their amenity, but they also have the right to use the big amenity. But the rest of the community can't use the amenity that's in the age-restricted section.
We're gonna need a motion on this.
I'm sorry, say that again.
We're gonna need a motion on this.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to move with it.
Okay. So make, have a motion on the floor to accept the IGA. All right, so Stan has the first, Elizabeth has the second, all in favor. All right, unanimous, thank y'all. The second thing under new business is ironically enough, an amendment to the service delivery strategy to include housing as a service for the city of Nuneaton. So, the county and all the municipalities in the county, every 10 years do a service delivery strategy, and we list out all the services that we provide. Sharpsburg provides library, trash, uh, I believe, water, a couple of other services, or we provide several services. Um, and in order to get a CBDG grant, Community Development Block Grant, for housing, the city of Nuneaton is adding their housing authority as a service delivery strategy, as a service in the service delivery strategy. Um, in order to do that, all the municipalities have to agree to amend the service delivery strategy to include Nuneaton's housing authority as a service. Brad, is that correct?
All above.
Okay. That's why I got you here.
The city of Nuneaton already has a housing authority. All right, this is to allow the city itself, which, you know, gets all of the federal monies and everything in, in operating the housing authority property, which is under a whole different law, a federal law. City's been in that business, or the housing authority, but it's a separate authority, and, and the only thing the city does with that authority is the mayors of any municipality with an authority appoint the mayors. The city of Nuneaton, as you might know, has been involved in the NSP programs, along with Habitat for Humanity and the Nuneaton Housing Authority, in providing those monies that were coming in from NSP, and there's probably six, seven million dollars that's out there in housing with PDM. The city recognized that there was a gap in providing certain other affordable housing opportunities, and so it created the Urban Redevelopment Agency. So that is an agency of the city, separate and apart from the housing authority, and there is seed money that has come into that agency to itself acquire, rehab, and sell properties. So it's, it's kind of a triumphant thing, it's the city itself, Habitat, and the Nuneaton Housing Authority. In order to get this grant, though, because that's what we have, the housing authority is authorized under the service delivery strategy to provide those opportunities, in order for DCA to consider the grant the city is asking for, then the SDS has to be amended to say that the city is providing that as a service, so that's...
And then, of course, the vehicle they're using is... Are we doing an IGA with it, or are we just?
No, just, well, what, I'm not sure of what she said.
It's just the SDS?
I think you just sign off on the, on the thing, and then that goes in under that particular area. It, for those of you who participated in the renegotiations on service delivery strategy, all of these areas, whether it's water, sewer, roads, all have a separate document that says what each governmental entity brings to the table with regard to services, whether they're within their own, you know, confined jurisdiction, or they're without. So here's an example that you're talking about, that the county provides road maintenance service in the town. Well, city of Nuneaton, if you look at that agreement, it says that city of Nuneaton, certain other towns provide those services within their jurisdiction. So this is just addressing the housing part, and of course, in 2022, I think it is, we'll be sitting down and renegotiating or redefining under what the current DCA rules are at that time, all of the service delivery strategy documents, so.
Is this obligated, Sandy? No.
I'm making a motion.
Elizabeth has made the first.
I'll second.
Stan has the second. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Uh, we don't have any old business before council tonight, so I'm gonna go to the public comments section, and the first person that I want to recognize is Mr. Cole McFadden?
Fannin.
Fannin, ah, shoot, I knew I was gonna mess it up. So this is Cole Fannin with the Small Business Development Council with the University of Georgia out of Carrollton, correct?
Yeah, so it's the University of Georgia, Small Business Development, and the University of West Georgia, so, let me sit, we're standing.
No, no, whichever, whatever you want, go ahead.
So we're part of the, again, we're part of the UGA Center, so our office is at the University of West Georgia. What we do is provide free one-on-one consulting to both established businesses and all those private contractors. So we're funded by an SBA grant, and we also receive supplemental state tax dollars.
Small business administration.
So when people say, well, if it's free, how do you pay? Our salaries, our overhead is paid by those grant proceeds, as well as those state tax dollars. So, SBA defines small business from zero to 50 million in annual revenue and up to 500 employees, and so there's a lot of different issues we work with. Cowee County is one of the counties that we serve in West Georgia, so we serve Cowee, Douglas, Carroll, Haraldson, Huron, and Polk. Our next closest office to Sharpsburg would be Clayton State, I'm not sure how far that is, but our job is to help grow Georgia-based, our Georgia-based businesses, and so we do that through numerous free resources at our discretion. Again, it's confidential one-on-one consulting to both business owners, as well as your managers, employees, whatever they be, so from accounting to sales and marketing, HR, all the board. We do a lot of business acquisitions out of our office, if you're looking to sell or buy your business, we'll help you kind of get a rough valuation of what that looks like. For us, it's about economic impact, and I've got some information that I'll leave, but it shows you across the state, the last five years, how many jobs we've helped to create, what the impact has been to the state. It's pretty, it's pretty incredible, what we do, and a lot of what we have access to, and so we have to meet with certain clients. Our contract says we have to work with small businesses. It's not, you know, hey, we're here for you, it's we want to go out and find those who need assistance. Again, it's not, a lot of people think, well, that's where you go to get your business started, but that's just not the case. That's about 25% of what we do, we do work with those bigger businesses. And so SBA looks at us each year and says, how many businesses of each kind of client segmentation of this revenue size, this employee size, do they help? And we're looking to see as we capture impact, revenue growth from previous year, so now that we meet with clients from last year, we're capturing what the revenues were, see what those percentage increases were, and things like that. So, uh, this is a very valuable source, a resource that we have here, it's a lot of fun, what we do, a lot of people just don't know that we're there. And so this is one of the counties that we serve, and is by far our most impactful county in terms of revenue and employee growth and things of that nature.
And what I, what we would like to do is offer SBDC services to all the businesses in Sharpsburg. We are doing our business licenses right now, so now is a great time to, as we're collecting the, the small business information, make it available, and we're looking at scheduling maybe one day a month, maybe one day in our six to eight weeks.
We do the same thing with the Cowee Chamber of Commerce, my director Todd and Dizzy and myself, we're the only two that's working in our offices, so we'll come, usually about the second, third week of the lot, that's on a Tuesday, to the chamber from nine to four, we'll, we do everything by appointment, so, you know, what, although we're kind of like an urgent care business week, you know, you don't just come in and see us, so we do have to plan accordingly, um, but it's, you know, I can't stress, my parents were in business growing up, and they would have a resource, it's under what we do, things may have ended differently for them, and so, you know, you don't know what you don't know, and so what does, or sometimes just to kind of get a different set of lens, lenses on your business to kind of see what it looks like. And I can't stress enough, like, probably one of the biggest things we camera is financial management, and it goes just deeper than, than that. All these businesses think that they've got a great business, it's worth, you know, $5 million, and you start looking at the balance sheet and income statement, tax returns, and it's essentially worth zero. And so it's about planning accordingly. One of the other pieces of what we do that we do charge for are programs, and so SBA, our contract says that we have to deliver a certain amount of continuing education programs. This year is 15. I've also got some information on that. We have a QuickBooks seminar coming up in Carrollton at the Burson Center, it's $169 for pretty much an all-day QuickBooks string. We have a website class coming up, we'll charge our website presence, we'll cover Google Analytics, Google AdWords, top stuff, how to really increase your presence online. And so all these, we look for the community to let us know what kind of program they want to see, we can create anything. And so with 17 offices in the state, we bring in other consultants, our consultant down in Brunswick's coming to teach this class, because he's Google certified, and he's got a lot of knowledge in that, in that area. So we want to surround ourselves with who can help our local community businesses grow and flourish.
Thank you. Does anybody on council have any questions for Mr. Fannin?
Thank you.
Any members of the public have any questions for him?
Just to reiterate, it's free.
Yes, it's all free. All right, Ms. Polly?
Okay.
Liz, Leanne? Lori, you good? Is Cowee County student back there, anything? Shelby, do you have any comments? Okay, just checking. Polling of council, I'll start down at the far end, Mr. Parton?
I did notice that, brought up last meeting, about our meetings in the paper, and they were finally put in there.
Yep.
So if you done that, good deal.
Good deal. Ms. Gooden? Cynthia? Tom?
Where are we on the traffic humps?
Um, so for the speed bumps, they are still being manufactured, I sent, let me see if he responded. I asked him a question today, I have gotten three... I have gotten three and a half quotes for the installation, and as, basically, as soon as they tell us that they are on the way, I will call council and I didn't, or hopefully before, identify which of the installation options will be most cost-effective, and then we'll schedule it. I think really the biggest thing, and he has not given me an update, I really think the biggest thing is how quickly after we receive them can we start the installation? We're going to have to do signs and a little bit of striping in front of them, so as long as we can line the sign installation and the striping up along with the installation, it should just be just a couple of weeks after they're delivered, is, is the short answer. But I don't have the date for when they're going to be delivered. I'll probably get, I'd like to get a week's notice before they ship them, but it may be as few as just a couple of days.
Are they coming out of China?
North Carolina.
North China.
North China. North Caro-China. All right, thank you. All right. Ms. Stroud, do you have anything for the clerks' comments?
Yes, Diane. Deena asked for everyone to sign in, and if you haven't signed in, including our guests, the sign-in is over there. And also, she said to review the application for the rezoning of 12 parks.
Okay.
And that's it.
Okay. For the mayor's minutes, I'll just remind everybody that we have a work session scheduled for next Monday, February the 10th, at 6:00. We will talk about our 2020 projects, primarily, I'm thinking for the, at least 30 minutes on sewer, and then the next 30 to 45 minutes on just the various projects that we, that we all see that need to be done, and then prioritizing those. And of course, those are just arbitrary time limits, obviously I don't want to limit any discussion, but I think having about half of it based on the sewer. We have had some, we have been having conversations on the sewer development. We did have some recent developments that may change the outlook a little bit. Originally, we were going to divide the project between Cheer and Sharpsburg and Cowee County Water and Sewer. Unfortunately, Cheer is not going to be part of the project at this time. However, my initial conversations with Water and Sewer Authority is they will still honor the original one-third agreement. So I don't think our, I'm hoping our price doesn't change much, but I'm hoping, I'll have more information by Monday.
They want to cut it in half?
No.
Or more than that?
No, no, because that was one of the first things I asked Jay, and I said, is this going to change our price? And he says, no, I think that, that they're going to continue, they're, they're going to stick with the, with our original topics, but I will have him here to answer some more of the specific questions. It's just laying, it's just laying out our options and seeing what we have to, to bring the infrastructure to town that we're going to need to, to grow and to have further developments. I look forward to a robust discussion and sharing a lot of information with you guys. We just have such potential here, so many things that we could do. It's just a matter of lining out in a logical order what we need to do and, and what directions we need to go in. I would like to point that we have our activities and amenities board over there. The blue marks, we have three of those. The blue marks are from the first one, the red marks will be from the second one, which is on the 10th, and then we'll do a different color for the session in April. So that way we can kind of tell who suggested what when. So if you haven't, or I see some of y'all have done a marks today, so if there's something on there that you like, please make sure to, to mark it with the sticker. If it's not listed on the standing-up board, write it on the one that's laying down. We also have some, some note cards for suggestions over there as well. And just thank you for your service. I don't have anything else. Now, having said everything, do I have any questions from council or from the public about anything in the mayor's minutes? All right, with that being said, if I can get a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All right, Stan has the first, Tom has the second. All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you very much.